Executive session?
No, we're gonna do a session.
I do it right? Okay, I'm the assessor.
Oh, okay.
Gone. Whatever that is. Okay, I call this meeting to order. Order of assessors. Do we have any citizen comments? I'm guessing not, since we have no citizens here. Nothing online? Can we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passed unanimously. Official action, abatement, personal property.
Yep, there are four different abatements tonight. The first one is Dwayne Severson. He has some equipment, but has been suffering stomach cancer, I understand, for a long time and have been very, very sick. So he did not get the paperwork into me. But two of the items I assessed him for, he had sold, and the other two were readjusted. But had he applied for the BETI, it would have been totally exempt. So he's asking the board to abate that property tax, that he did not get exempted.
Is this, there are two Duanes Seversons?
This is the one up on, up depot.
Yeah, oh, the young one.
Yes.
Yes, oh.
You've been fighting for it a while.
Oh, I'm sorry to do that. He did some work for me.
Yeah.
Mainly jerseys on there. Oh, she's amazing.
Do you want a motion on this one, Frank? Make a motion to abate $858.50?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor? Is that the Zoom one?
The, the next one is Sean Brewer. And it revolves around his homestead.
Is this executive session?
Not yet. This is assessors, that's.
Yep, just making sure we got it recorded and online.
So he lives down at 55 Fintown Road. And had his homestead up until 2017, when he was incarcerated. So it was taken away because he wasn't there. But then given back to him for a couple of years, for the 1920. And then I got a application for fuel assistance saying that somebody else was there paying rent, he was not living there. The light bill was in her name, she got some fuel in her name. The property is in Sean's name as well as Linda's name. Sean has had a accident that they did not think he would live through, he has, but he's got extreme brain damage. He was in actually today getting some oil, but they're waiting for a room where he can be rehabbed, but they can't find a room for him where.
Homeowner?
His situation. He was a clamor, but has no income. His mom said they did apply for the disability, but that'll take 10 months or whatever it takes to get through that. Supposedly, they went under the wrong process because he hadn't paid in. She has a home and lives in Warren and has an $800 a month check coming in for her, but says $3,000 tax over there in Warren. So the question is whether the board would help Sean towards a couple of years of taxes in awarding the homestead. Had he come in and applied, he would have got. So for the 20, April 1st, 20, which is fiscal year 2021, it would be $455. And then for this year, it would be $450.
Linda's his mother?
Linda is his mother. He supposedly is there at the moment with his sister. But the story just seems to go on and on and on and on.
All right, both of them now.
Oh, okay.
Anybody familiar with Sean Brewer's? Oi!
Hey, Ben's late. Brewers.
Oi!
So this is really what he would have gotten for his homestead?
Yes.
So he's not really asking for anything, just he was late and/or messed up in getting the homestead back?
But did he?
She says he's always lived there, that he lets homeless people live there, that he let the individual live there. The power was put in her name because he has a $2,000 back bill.
Oh.
So he can't get power in his name until.
So he used somebody else to get it.
So I think they just came in and got oil and got power, everything in her name, saying she was the party living there. She did bring in a statement tonight saying she was there from January to March only. Yet she brought him to get his oil today. So she's obviously still in the picture.
Are we still in assessors?
We are. Trying to figure out homestead.
Got it.
Yeah.
But it's.
I know.
Yeah, so he can have somebody live there.
Yes, as long as he's living there.
As long as he's there, he can have company.
But when somebody comes in and says, "I'm renting a home, I take yours away because you're a landlord,"
Yes, yeah.
"to live."
Yeah, makes sense.
So it happens quite a bit. There's quite a bit. Homestead is really tough to try to figure out who's living there. And on April 1st.
Yes.
Does you have one here that 2021 you don't have is reconciling? Is that what that?
Right, I didn't have a recommendation down there. You know, there was, they didn't bring their application until now. It's gone beyond the time that you usually abate. You know, usually it's within 180 days, but he is in rough, rough shape, won't get his disability presumed, it will be retroactive. I don't, it's, all it's owed is about $500 on 2021. So we're not going to be taking the property anytime soon. Or do you want to help him out in his time of need?
One thing. We have two because they're two different years.
Yes. I mean, on, even with Dwayne, legally, you could have denied we didn't have an application in. And even here, the application was not in there. She mentioned today, well, I can appeal if it doesn't go my way to the county, yes, but you have no standing. It's gone beyond 180 days, you had no application. I think it's slammed down, but then again, some boards show favor and help him out. That's, that one. Not a whole lot, and could help somebody in need.
Does one, do we put that through?
No, it goes through a straight abatement.
So we still, do we get?
It would come out of overland.
We get that pay?
No, we will not get any reimbursement for the state. Normally, you get half from the state on the homestead, and you wouldn't get any because you missed it. Same way with the better on Dwayne, we'll get no reimbursement because the application was not there signed.
But it's a little bit different with a tractor, right?
Nope, we get half on BETI and we get half on homestead.
But.
Each one has to have an application on file.
Well, what's the, what's the difference of what the town's essentially paying from one to the other?
None.
The same rate on the same?
Yes, everything at the same rate, 18 on this year's. 1820 was last year, 1830, 1830 maybe.
But one's a piece of equipment and one's a house?
Yep. The equipment is reimbursed on the BETI.
Correct.
And the house is reimbursed on the homestead.
Now, has he filed a homestead now?
He has.
Okay. For 2022s or?
No, for, we just did 22s. We'll be doing 23s next April.
Yep.
He was not in there. We're talking this year, the bill he just got that's due November 15th, he did not have it in. Just filed it. And he didn't have it in last year.
But he will for next year.
Next year, he's got his application on file. If he's living there or if, you know, he's gonna be. If, or.
If he doesn't have a bed somewhere.
I guess if he's got a bed somewhere. Like if you're in a nursing home, but the intent is for you to return to your home, generally, you can keep your homestead. Because if you were to be cured, you'd be back. But when they rent them out and they come in and say, "I'm renting this and paying rent," then that's it.
So.
I'll make, make a motion to approve it.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Are you pondering over there, Abbott?
No, I'm also.
I'm gonna do both years.
Okay, do them together for both, for 50 years. Okay, all in favor? I don't know, is Bob voting on?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
I don't have the material in front of me.
Is this a fill book or assessors?
Nope, we're still assessing. Two more assessing. Yep, Elaine Robbins lives down at 621 Friendship Road. It was a beautiful, beautiful farm back in the day. All grown up. And there is a gully down there that has eroded even more. There was actually someone down there doing, looking for artifacts, is how she was made aware of this. Because this is a very historic place, there's the original cemetery down there. And the gully has washed away another five feet, so there's probably a 30-foot gully that would take up about an acre of land. So if we value that at zero, it abates $18 off her tax. It's not a whole lot. Somebody could buy that, put the fields back, and have it be able to farm again. But that's the story on hers and what she's requesting.
I'll make a motion for that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Right, any more discussion? All in favor?
And the last one is a mobile home at, I call it the Patsy's, sorry. It'll always be the Patsy's, right? Use that one and steal one. All right. This is Elijah Johnson's. I had valued it 22,000. I think it's, needs a lot of work, it's in poor shape. He did not apply for the homestead, he will next year, and they're doing the work for next year. But would recommend we cut it in half for this year or 198 for the abatement.
Is that what you feel is all?
Yeah.
Would be now? Okay, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And you can adjourn.
Okay.
Bob is taking care of. Just for the future, for any like remote things, you always do need to like do a roll call for the person who's attending remotely. So you need to ask it, how Bob voted.
I didn't hear what he said.
We, we know that Bob was attending by Zoom, so you have to take a roll call.
Oh.
And you do call for his vote.
Oh, okay. He said he abstained because he didn't have any material work.
So we abstained him on all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, he didn't have the stuff.
That is correct.
Go ahead. I need a motion to adjourn, or you do.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Now you can go into executive session.
All right. Back to me.
Yep.
Somebody like to make a motion to go into executive session?
I move we go into executive session.
Second.
Well, you got pursuant to?
Pursuant to one MRS A 405, parentheses, six, parentheses, F, as a fill book from trustees to discuss applications. 5.1 and 5.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Bob?
Yes.
Okay. There we go. All right, we're recording.
Now we have to go back in.
Yep. Back into session? Oh, you want to go right back out?
We have to go right back in.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to go back into executive session?
I move we go into executive session.
Pursuant to?
Oh.
Number six.
Pursuant to one MRS A 405, parentheses, six, parentheses, C, to discuss acquisition of real property or economic development.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Okay. Call us, meet your order. Pledge allegiance at first. Presentations, I don't see any. Over hearings, we don't have any. The adjustments to the agenda? Bob?
No, sir.
Okay. Just checking. Anybody else? Citizens' comments?
Kat Skow, and I just wanted to take about two minutes to talk about Oktoberfest, and I have something for you. We had Oktoberfest about a month ago, beginning of October. And the first thing I want to do is publicly thank the Waldaborough businesses that sponsored it because if they hadn't put blind faith into this event, it would not have happened. And so they are Brown's Propane, Sheep's Cut Bay Physical Therapy, Hall Funeral Home, Chuck Campbell Architects, Waldaborough Environmental Park, RZR Company, Store Lumber, Dow Furniture, Tucker Chevrolet, Shelley's Flowers and Gifts, Madomic Design, Madomic Veterinary Services, Skelton Tainter and Abbott, Bold Summit Pet Resort, Laura Cabot Catering, Maine Antique Digest, Moody's Gifts, Moody's Diner, Flintlock Forge, Pooley Realty Group of William Ravis Real Estate, the Waldaborough Historical Society, Morse's Sauerkraut, and Odd Illwives. And so if there, any of them are listening, I just want them to know that it was a success. As, as, we think it was a success. We had between 400 and 450 people come. Lot of families. There were a lot of games, thanks, and activities, thanks to Bill Maxwell and my husband, Valdemar. There was music, people drank beer, they ate all the food. It was gone at the end of the event. And we had cider pressing. And it was not a fundraiser. Some people thought we were raising money for the library or the historical society. We weren't, we were just doing this as a way to celebrate Waldaborough's German heritage. We didn't have any admission fee or, we did have to charge for food. But we still ended up raising some money. And we had donation jars all over the place, and they were labeled that if you made a donation, it was going to go to the General Assistance Fund. If you played Nagelbaken, you had to buy your nail, and that money went to the General Assistance Fund. We ended up unexpectedly having to cook the food ourselves because Morse's couldn't be there. So we got some of the food profits that we wouldn't have gotten otherwise. And so we decided that we would share some of our spoils. So I'd like to present a $500 check to the Town of Waldaborough's General Assistance Fund from Oktoberfest. And the people on the committee that helped make the decision to give this money include Susan Price, and Marsha Drenzick, and Bob Butler, and Bill Maxwell, and me. So there's a $500 check in here, and there's also another check from a private citizen who made a donation, Ray Perkins. So I just wanted to present that.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Slip with comments. Would you like to go first, Bob?
Thanks, thank you, Abbott. I'm sorry I'm not there in person tonight, I wish I were. The, just a short announcement that the Waldaborough Theater will be putting on a show, a photography exhibit Thursday night from 5:00 to 7:00. And the photographs are quite amazing, actually. They're, they're taken by Liz McGregor and Alan Nix. And the subject is Patagonia. Quite beautiful. And I encourage you to go and attend and visit the theater, see what the inside looks like again, it's a beautiful place. And support the Waldaborough. That's my announcement, thank you.
Okay, cool. Colonel?
The only thing I have is, there's a Veterans Day program at the Waldaborough Historical Society at 10:30 on Thursday.
Just a shout out to our community navigator. I got, I got a call from an elderly person who needed some advice and some help. And, and so I came in the next day. I, I told her about the, our community navigator and what they did. She's not in town right now, and so I, I went in and asked and, boy, I got so much information in such a short time. And then went back and casted on, and that person was just delighted and, and very thankful to get that information to help, help her out. So I was really pleased that our town could do that.
Well?
October 30th, Conservation Commission had a roadside cleanup. It was raining, but still had some people come out, and they filled eight contractor bags with garbage. So I'd like to thank all those folks who showed up in the rain and helped pick up Waldaborough.
All right. How, Amanda just reported.
Thank you. Today was the last day to sign up for Thanksgiving baskets, and we had 90 families sign up for Thanksgiving baskets. That's roughly 30 more than we did last year. Christmas.
Are we gonna be able to fulfill that?
We threw the Ecumenical Church in Newcastle their food pantry in conjunction with some other food pantries in the area, I believe they will. If not, we have Tanya, Karenian, and I have a plan. Christmas baskets, the Lions Club is going to be partnering, partnering with the Waldaborough Food Pantry. So things are going to look a little bit slightly different this year, but you can still sign up on the website. I want to remind everybody about the Waldaborough Toys Program. We will be here the Saturday after Thanksgiving between 3:00 and 5:00, our emergency services. And we'll have our fill an emergency vehicle event, where you can drop off new unwrapped toys. And we're also conducting, where you can sign up for if there's a child in Waldaborough that needs a coat and boots this year again. So we are accepting cash donations, check donations, gift card donations, and donations of new unwrapped toys. We cannot accept anything handmade due to COVID. So that's where we are with that. I wanted to let you know that the special election that we're going to talk about tonight, during the election, we had 1,500
And 33.
1,533 voters on Election Day. And I did make sure, as I was registering voters and people were leaving, I did hand out that we are going to be having a special election on December 14th. So we got it out to as many people as we could. That was a little bit more than we were anticipating for the turnout, but Pam Jamison, our town clerk, did an excellent job in her first election. And our crackerjack staff of ballot clerks, I gotta tell you, they're amazing. They just do such a great job, both ships. We had a great time. And that's all I have.
Consent calendar. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any correspondence? All is in favor? Bob? Yep. All right, new business. Code enforcement. Official enforcement.
We have, we have Stan with us tonight.
Would Stan like to step up from the center?
Stan, do you want, do you want a standard, or would you like me to?
No, I'll go real quick.
To move something so you can stay seated and chat?
Am I pulling up pictures now?
So I just want to tell you that
Yeah, you put more stat.
Stan is now full-time with us starting November 1st, and we are very happy to have him. And he's had a very busy week in two days since he's been full-time.
Yes. So, start right off? All right, so there's some issues that need to be taken care of in Waldaborough. These are started probably at least three years ago, both of the ones I'm going to bring up tonight. We've got a couple others, but you'll hear about them at your next meeting. Don't want to overwhelm you all at once. So the first one is 970 Main Street, which is owned by Seth Hall. I think you've got the pictures. So the, this picture I took today, this morning.
You don't have those pictures in your packets?
Yeah. So the back of the house had an L that was connected with a smaller connector to the barn. And that was rotting, and the roof was falling and and stuff, so three years ago, I told him it was a dangerous building, and he needed to tear it down and, or he'd be fined. Well, he said he was going to do it, but it never got done, he promised. So this has been ongoing for three years, and you have copies of the letters in your packet, I believe. So this summer, when I sent a formal notice to him, he sent a handwritten letter back saying he'd have it done within two weeks. And that was in August, I believe it was. And it didn't come to fruition. And I saw him here on Election Day and told him he was coming to the Sleckman's meeting, or that I was bringing it up and, with all the letters and stuff. He says, "I'll get right on it." Well, the only thing that he has done is taken the wood on the outside of the building. But he's left all the trash and garbage, including metal and insulation. If you look, so this is what's left on the ground now. And he sent an email after I left there today, saying that he would hope to clean it up by the end of next week. But he keeps telling me that, and that's gone on for three years. So I think it's time that the planning board took action and fined him and, and set a date that if it's not cleaned up, that he'll get a, a larger fine and a daily fine, which is what he was told actually three years ago. I was there today, and I think it would probably take at least two, if not three, 30-odd containers to get rid of what's there. And in his email, he said he could do it in five to eight trailer loads, which he's talking about his little utility trailer. There's no way. There's a picture, let's see, the one with the fireplace in it?
Oh, it was this one.
Nope, there's one more.
Uh, the other two are just.
Too far.
The other two is the other place.
Nope. All right. So anyway, there's, there's appliances there, there's five-gallon cans and stuff that are in, oh, the long picture that I gave to Julie, that's.
There it is.
There's even more than what's in that picture there, that I didn't take a picture of today.
This is the long picture that I took today.
That's, yes, sir.
Are there any caustic materials in there?
Well, the building's got asbestos sidein', and he took it off. And I don't know what, actually, what he's done with the asbestos sidein'. He said he, I think, I don't know what he did with the asbestos.
You know, just be afraid of buckets of acetone or something like that, that.
Well, I can't tell what's underneath because the floors fell in on it. And I think when you see these pictures, you'll see, if you look from, there's a single picture that Julie has that was taken from the library today, and that's all insulation. There's buckets there, there's, yeah, you know, there is metal containers and stuff in that trash.
That's from the library side.
And it just happens that the neighbors, one of the neighbors is here tonight, she is willing to speak. So the house, actually, the house is there now, has two collapsed floors or a collapsed floor that's gone into the basement. Yeah, so it's, it's got to be taken care of, and he just keeps telling us, and pushes the timeline, so. My recommendation that you fine him at least $1,000 and so much a day until he gets it cleaned up.
When do you want that to start?
Three years ago?
Be nice.
I think we have been very lenient.
We've been extremely.
Too lenient, but now that I'm here.
That's very dangerous to the proximity of the library. That's very dangerous to the proximity of the library.
Oh, there's. Exactly.
It's terrible. It's been terrible.
And if the neighbor had visitors or something, then they have kids, you know.
That's terrible. Did you say he took the asbestos siding off the house himself?
Yes.
I don't know. He buried it, he told me he buried it. He said he was going to bury it behind the barn, but that's my land that wraps around his property. So I'm very, I just bought the house in May, my house. And my goal was to, I restore houses for a living, is to, that was one property. And that's a historic Seacaptin House. My goal is to hopefully buy his house so I could own both properties again. I've been in the house personally twice in the recent months. He has high aspirations and doesn't follow through on anything. I've been a super nice neighbor. I've even mowed his lawn over and over again. And then he sent me an invoice from June that he mowed the back of my yard once. But he, it's very frustrating for me. I bought it, the other house, because of the potential. And I have to look out every day and see that. And then Halloween came and I, the library participated, I participated. And we dressed up and we had everything. And I had kids cutting across from the library trying to get to my house because my house sits back. And he's told me a lot of stories too, like what he was going to accomplish. And I first met, the first time I met Walt was in May when I purchased my house. And he told me, he kept telling me it's going to be done, it's going to be done. And then he just, it doesn't happen. And I wouldn't be surprised if there's toxic things in there. It's just, I was in the house and I watched him fall through the floor. And I almost think the house is built in 1830. I think the main house is a threat too, because if anybody, now it's wide open on the back where the L fell off. If anybody goes in there, it's all caved in now. It's sad. I restore houses, I'm not afraid of anything and I'm afraid of that house, really. And I don't know what to do. I've offered to buy it from him. I've offered to pay for the rollaway. I've offered to help clean it up. I've been the nicest neighbor I can be and nothing is getting done. And it's very frustrating.
And she's, just a quick story, she's fixing her place. And then he basically condemned her place, saying, you know, well, why don't you fix it up? It's facing Main Street.
He sits in front of the rebel and tells me, you're going to fix the barn next. And I'm like, in four months, I've done.
It looks good.
A hundred times more than what he's done.
It looks good.
And he offends me by what he says because he's like, you know what? Oh, the front came out better than I thought it would. And I'm like, excuse me? I'm the one that did all the painting. I did all the fixing. I do, I do everything, a lot of stuff myself. And I was hoping that, it's promoted a lot of people to fix their properties. Because there's two or three houses down, they're all starting to fix it up and clean up because I'm a woman doing all this stuff, you know? And I was hoping that would, you know, make stuff want to clean up his act. And like I said, I'm, my patience is running thin. And I've been nice, like I said, I even mowed his property. I've done everything I can to be a nice neighbor. But I don't know what's going to happen when the winds pick up now. And like, what's going to blow into my yard and what's going to happen, my air quality when I open my window on the side, you know? I just don't, because the library's on the other side, the amount of kids that come through. It's just, it's just a hazard. And when I bought my property, I was hoping that because of this, I know it's been ongoing, like you bought it in 2016, I think, in the auction. I knew that eventually something would happen, have to happen. And I'm just hoping now it kind of speeds it up and.
She just happened to be outside today and I saw her. So when I was coming around to take pictures, I knocked on the door, so.
I was too busy cleaning my yard, but. I have tons of pictures too, so on my phone, I keep a progress check of what's going on next door. He shut the electric off. It smells like sewer from the basement. There's holes in the side of his house that, if you get anywhere near the house, it smells. It's a shame, it's really a shame. And I saw, when I went down the basement, this is a couple months ago, all the, it's so wet down there, the beams are dripping. And all the, the granite foundation's fine, obviously on the outside, but all the inner structure, somebody had to put concrete floors in and put radiant heat on the first floor. It's just the weight of it made everything crack and then the wetness and everything. It's just, I personally know the main house is salvageable. I mean, I do this for a living, so I, you know. But he needs to button it up. Because if he doesn't button it up, the roof's getting ready too, the roof needs work. And it's right in town. It's like historic district and it's really upsetting to me that it's gone this far without anybody cleaning it up, so. And that's what I, that's what I had to say.
Do you want to go into the next one?
Well, we just have your name for the record.
Yeah, it's Roberta. My last name's Cheviot, C.H.E.V.I.O.T.
Do you want to handle this one separately? Handle them separately? Are they going to be under the same parameters?
You technically should handle them separately.
Right, but I'm, yeah, probably be a good idea. That's what I was thinking. Would you, do you want to send us, sending a letter out tomorrow to put your?
Well, I've sent him one already. Everything that you've got, he has a copy of. And it says, my recommendation to you is to set a fine and then a daily fine until it's cleaned up.
Did you put your recommendation in?
I think so. Well, maybe not.
All I see is the letters.
The recommendation will be to use the town attorney to start court actions to enforce ordinances and statutes, including associated monetary fines, including attorney fees and court costs.
I think we need to do something. That was a lovely old home. I spent a lot of time in that house many years ago. It was a beautiful home and beautiful gardens. And it's just, it's so sad, such a shame.
Would somebody like to make a motion to take action?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? You all set, Bob?
Yes, sir.
So the fine would be $100 based on.
Well.
$100 a day.
But you can set a.
Yeah, I was about to say you're going to.
But you can set a fine, like $1,000, and then so much a day until it's cleaned up if that's what you would desire to do.
So you would need to make a motion to set the fine and what's the daily?
All right, what we'll do is we'll do it as a, who won't be taking action, we'll vote on that, then we'll set the actions. Does that sound all right?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of taking action? All right, now would somebody like to make a motion to what the parameters of the actions will be? And I believe Stan recommended $1,000 fine and $100 a day after.
You can go up, yeah, you can make it more than 100 if you want to. State statute, you can go up to 2,500 a day, so. Depends on whatever you want to do.
Just a point of order, you have to do the roll call and ask Bob for his vote. Yes, okay. What did you vote on the last? I see your hand up, but you just got to verbalize it, Bob. On the last vote?
My hand was up on the last.
Right, but you didn't, you got to verbalize it, so everyone.
Yeah, no, I, my vote was yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yep, no, I see your hand was up.
No, so Max is right.
We're all getting used to this new-fangled way of doing votes.
Okay, so what is the board's pleasure?
Are you saying a total of $5,000?
A $5,000 and potentially up to $100 a day.
For not responding to the other three letters he's had over the last three years.
Right.
So that'd be $1,000.
$1,000 over three years isn't a whole lot of money.
No, it isn't, but you can set it up to 2,500 or. If you go to court, you can pay $10,000, but I think you'd want to do it for 2,500 so that he starts doing it because you start tying up court costs. It may be next spring if he does anything. I don't know that, but I just, the way things are going, it's, he's not a friendly guy to me as far as enforcement stuff.
Yep. What is the board's pleasure? Bob?
I was wondering, Stan, if he doesn't pay the fine, we are accruing a claim against the property as a town.
Yes.
And the only way then to get that money out of the property would be to sell it, to foreclose and to sell it. If this were to go down that road and he wasn't to act to take care of the problem.
Well, you could, if he doesn't pay it, you can put a lien on it, the same as you would put taxes.
Right.
As a select board.
I just wanted to make that clear, that that is one eventuality that we might be having to look at. I don't know what Seth is going to do, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Well, we have a letter here from 2019, November 8th, that he was ordered to make the, make it safe, blah, 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 fine of $100 day, starting on October 15th, 2019.
Yes.
And at that point, he owed $2,400.
Yeah, I didn't go back.
Have you ever get anything from him?
We have not.
Well, we need to do something so that.
That he does something?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, Jan, make a recommendation.
Well, I mean, he already. So two years ago, he owed $2,400 to the town?
So he's been accruing the $100 a day since then? Hasn't been cleaned up?
We'd have to go to court to enforce that part of it. But you can enforce the $2,400 part of it and set a fine as a select board. I can only make a recommendation, I can't. So if you wanted to say a fine of 2,500 and $200 a day until you get it cleaned up, then you can do that under your authority.
Well, I move that we assess $2,400 fine and $100 a day from whatever date you come up with for this property.
Do we have to give him a week?
I'd say you start finding him a date of that letter because that's what it says. The last letter I sent him, which was.
November 3rd?
Yeah. But he hasn't done any.
We haven't followed through on any of these, so we.
Would you like to put that in your motion? Colonel?
Yes. Whatever you said, it's fine with me.
November 6th.
November 6th of.
2020.
Oh, November 6th, 2020.
Well, I mean, we could go back to 2000, the first one, was it 2018?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think.
I don't think we can get.
I meant the fine, the fine, the $2,400 fine is fine. But I would start at $100 a day.
On November 8th.
From the last one I sent this year.
November 3rd.
Right. Go back a year or so, you're going to have to go to.
Exactly. $2,400 plus the date.
Starting November 3rd.
Does that sound?
Yes, that's perfect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How do we make, how do we follow through and make sure that he does it? Because obviously he chooses not to do what he's asked to do.
Well, Stan is here now, full-time.
Okay, so he'll be at his door.
Stan will be.
I'll write a letter and I'll tell him there's one in the office waiting for him and what the fine is. And there's one to be coming in the mail and I'll send it certified. So he knows tomorrow what his fine is. So it's probably up to, it's over $3,000 already. And it's $100 a day, so stop what you're doing and get it cleaned up.
And if he doesn't, what happens?
Well, we'll keep accruing. And then if I come back here in two weeks, I'd suggest that you get a lawyer. But hopefully, he starts cleaning up before then. He could probably go over to Garden Libby and have somebody here in two days. You know, he'd be out of there in two days, but that's his choice.
We would then proceed just like we do with other dangerous properties in town.
Do we need a timeline? You know, that he has, gets so much done by this date?
No.
You know, otherwise he could, you know, pick up a two-by-four every other day.
No, it's got to be.
I'm working on it, you know?
I would, well, you may want to put it in, clean to my satisfaction, or whatever.
Up to code?
Correct. Which means everything is going to be gone and built and buttoned up and.
You okay, Bob?
I just wanted to be sure what the exact wording of the motion is, so I know what we're voting on.
$2,400 fine and starting November 3rd of this year, it's $100 a day after November 3rd of him receiving this letter.
Okay.
And it must be clean.
There'll be the same language in there about to the satisfaction of our code enforcement officer.
To the satisfaction of code enforcement.
Yeah.
That's what it said, exactly.
Thank you.
Are we all set, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. All those in favor? And Bob?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to the next one.
He says he doesn't have the money to do it. I've offered to rent the dumpster and everything, so.
He'll get it done.
It's time now for him to.
He can sell some of the property he owns that's falling apart.
I was going to say, he just bought another property in town. He has money.
He has money, yeah.
Okay, we'll move along. The next one?
So next one is Darren Grindel, which is at 3288 Atlantic Highway, which is, some of you may know as the old, I think it was Skinner property where they had smoked LIs, destroyed after Northeast Transport. So there's no, there's some old gravel pits out back. One is reclaimed and that's where he's been dumping trash. So I was there. The first set of pitches you got was Springer this year. And I was notified by a neighbor that he was hauling in demo debris. So I went out and took some pitches, wrote him a letter, and fined him $1,000. And that, so now, I didn't hear anything and I thought he was probably cleaning it up because I'd met him because he's putting in a new septic system. Said, oh, yeah, I'm going to get right on it. So I inspected the septic and talked to him about that and showed him the pitches I had. This fall, a couple weeks ago, I got another phone call that he started hauling in again at night on Saturdays. So I went out with Max and took some pitches and he piled it right in front of what was there. And it's all demo debris from buildings that are tearing down. It includes stuff like mattresses, appliances, insulation of all types, wire, propane tanks, it's just all kinds of stuff there. So today I talked with, I sent an email to the DEP because I couldn't get him on the phone and he answered me back late this afternoon. So Mike Parker from the DEP is a land enforcement. And I had contacted somebody about the gravel pit that's further out back. Because if the, you can't see it from the road, from a public way, it's considered what they call curtilage. So they can't do anything unless they see it. So I was trying to get him to go out and look at the gravel pit. And on the way by, it's, you can see it. But they said, no, the gravel pit, they did a shot from a satellite and said, no, it's too small. So that's why they got Mike Parker involved. So hopefully I'll talk to him tomorrow. But as a town, we can do the same thing, set a fine because his is not only dangerous, but it's, you know, can get into the water. There's all kinds of issues out there. And I actually looked up junkyard before I came in here and that town ordinance tonight and includes private landfills and junk and debris. So, and neither one of these people have ever responded back. I've sent them letters, I've asked them to call me, I've given my cell phone number and the town number. They've never sent a note or called. And while I was out there this time with Max, his daughter came out because we had been out there so long. She was at the house. He's also, which I didn't write any notes, but he's brought in, he bought a house in Northport when they closed down the center up there. And he's brought a house in and it's sitting out there on a piece of land with no permits. There's an air conditioner and a window, but, you know, she said she's not staying there. She's staying in the house. But anyway, there's other issues, but this one is the most pressing right now because it's been there way over a year. I didn't know until January this year when the first pitches were taken. But, and he hasn't responded back since he's, and I know he has the letter, the last one I sent.
So what would you recommend on this one?
Basically the same thing.
Do you want to go with a $1,000 fine and $100 a day from?
Well, I think if we update him, he may do something.
So if you want to do it.
Same fine.
The $2,400 fine and $100 a day after November 4th?
Yes.
And to your satisfaction of being cleaned up?
Yep. And I'm sure that I can get Mike Parker out there from the DEP.
Are you okay with that, Bob?
Yes, I am. I'd make that motion.
You make that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just one on the letter, it says to abate this violation within 21 days from the date of this letter, which would be the 25th of November.
Okay.
Right, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, probably. I don't... But he also got a letter in April saying the same thing, and now he's brought in more. He's doubled it from what it was in April.
So we'll take that from the 25th.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we set the date for the 25th, so it's $2,400 fine, $100 after, the day after.
Okay.
I would have meant my motion to be that.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And would you like to amend your second?
I amend my second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob, cool.
There are a few more that we just want to update you on. There had been a dangerous building located at Bank Town Road by the high school, and that is being...
Sold and demoed. Lanny Vogues bought it.
Okay. And has been demoed from the mall up?
It's in the process.
Okay, cool. A little more cleaned up to be off for a vote.
Yeah, and we got, I sent a letter to the end of Philbrook Road, down past the old high school. I don't know if you've been there, but there's a lot of trash there. She's gotten letters from three years, it's still on the ground, now they're filling vehicles. And come to find out, the town owns a 38-foot right away between the edge of the road, the right of Philbrook Lane, and her property. And all that vehicles and trash is actually on town property. So, but hopefully, it gets taken care of before your next select board meeting.
And we are still working on the one on Winslow's Mill Road.
Yeah.
Has issues.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
You have your matching list.
Thanks.
Okay. Review of suggested construction fees.
I'm gonna let Max handle that one.
What's up, Mr. Max?
So everyone should have received, hopefully, three documents. One that says Town of Waldeboro fee schedule, Town of Waldeboro site review fee schedule, and then fee changes. I think you'll remember, last year, we made some updates to the building fee schedule, just because it's been about 10 years since an amendment was done. We're making quite a few more changes, just to make it a bit more simplified, and to update the prices considering the other prices you'll see in the area. I, I mean, Stan, do you have any other thoughts you want to just give about the building permit fees, since that's the bigger focus?
No. I think you've covered it pretty well.
So I can quickly run down the list. So first of all, the building fees and site plan fees are being separated into two lists. This is just to make it easier, because more than not, you're gonna just have someone come in and ask for the fees just to build something. Not everyone's gonna go to the planning board or the Board of Appeals, so we're keeping that separate, so that I have that ready for myself. Whereas, the fee schedule is a nice, bigger one, and easier to read. There's gonna be some overlap, but it's, it's same ones that, it doesn't mean you're gonna be paying twice for them. Shoreland permit is being increased from $50 to $75, so if you're gonna do something in the shoreland, it's a $70 fee, $75 fee. Application is its own separate category, so that originally, it was $30 plus an amount based on square footage. We're just gonna have the application at its own category, just simply saying, if you're gonna file an application, it's gonna cost this much, $30. Advertising is also a separate category. With the planning board, we always have to put out an ad in the paper, so this is to cover that. New residential structures is being increased from 20 cents per square foot to 25 cents a square foot. New additions are increased from 15 cents per square foot to 20 cents per square foot. There was an old category called moving structures, which is just entirely removed, just because these increases pretty much cover that. Moving a structure was just $10, $20, really nothing too big. Site review includes the application and advertising fees. Outdoor-only applications now include the advertising fee. Change of use and amendments is increased from $100 to $125. This is just someone who's maybe changing the use of an old building from like a residential home to a commercial one. Still goes to the planning board, and it incorporates all that. Advertising and application subdivision amendment increased from 100 to 125. Antenna is a new, the antenna category we used to have is replaced with the towers category, where it is a flat $500 for new construction and $100 for each new fixture. Swimming, permit fees for swimming pools increased from $35 to $50, and that's regardless of whether it's an above-ground or in-ground pool. Subsurface system will be $300 regardless of the system. A miscellaneous category was installed for septics, just so that if you don't have to do a brand-new one, that's the category. Field-only are leach fields, which will be $200. Seasonal conversion category is so that a septic is upgraded from seasonal to a year-round home, that will be $100. Septic variance is a new category, $30 fee. And then holding tank and alternative toilets are combined into alternative system, and that fee is increased from $150 to $200. And these are all based on what the previous or the current building fee schedule is right now.
Are there any questions? I see Bob's hand up, actually.
Go ahead, Bob.
I was just wondering, Max, I'm sure you've done this, how do these fees compare to those of neighboring towns? Are we, are we competitive?
Stan would probably be best to answer that.
So the ones that are intermediate area, we're catching up to them? But if you get to like Thomaston or Boothpey, they're actually higher than what we're recommending tonight?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any of those level, do you have any questions? Would you like an approval for these tonight? Is that what you're looking at?
I mean, you know, if you got the time, that'd be nice, yes.
If you got the place.
We're here. We can, or you can let it stew until the next meeting, if you'd like.
Now, when you, I guess I got a question, when you do a new septic system design, that's $300, and that includes the, the whole septic system period?
Correct.
Okay. It's because you've just got field-only here as well, so I was just making sure it wasn't a double...
Yeah, some people, the tank is with the Smith tank.
Yep.
They might have had a metal one.
Yep.
And that rotted down, they put a cement one in, now the field's gone.
Yep.
Probably just replace the field and not the whole tank and everything. And the old fees are state minimums.
Mm-hmm.
And those have been in effect now for like 12 years. These have changed in the last 12 years. So what our CEOs meet is that we have every month, they figure it out, and just Thomaston versus, at commercial, it's 50 cents a square foot. And it comes up to about 1% of the building cost. And that was figured on, something small like Dunkin' Donuts, to as big as Walmart, it's still averaged out of about less than, right around 1%.
Of the cost of building?
Yes. And that was at 50 cents, and we're recommending 30 for commercial.
Does anybody have any questions? You all set, Bob?
Yes, I am.
Would anybody want to extend the motion, or do you want to sit on it?
I move that we approve the fee schedule for the Town of Waldeboro effective, what, tomorrow?
Whenever you want to set it, and the site review, and the site review fee schedule, if you don't mind.
Yeah, both of these, together.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, cool. You are all set with that, Max?
Thank you.
So, review Rockland's disorderly property ordinance.
So, if you'll recall, I think about a month ago, I sent you an email, I forwarded an email to you from Karenian, our community navigator, who had come across a disorderly properties ordinance. And one of the things that she's facing, and our police department face, is complaints coming from the same properties over and over and over again. And a lot of these properties have issues that are, social issues that are not easy to deal with, as you can imagine. So towns have come up with a way, and she was reading the paper and found this, of a disorderly property ordinance. And what it does is it basically is going to start holding the landlord accountable in some respects for the conduct that they allow on their property. And several different towns have, have different ones. So disorderly conduct is any conduct that would have a tendency to disturb unreasonably the community, the neighborhood, or an ordinary individual in the vicinity of said building. And this is, some of the examples are loud music, parties, sounds emanating from within the structure, loud noise, fights within the building, inviting, involving tenants or their invitees, tenants or invitees being intoxicated, out-of-control individuals, drug or alcohol-related offenses, altercations occurring on the property, fighting, brawling, or similar activities. And what it does is it gives you some time, so for instance, it gives you a number. If you look at the Rockland ordinance, they're saying it could be considered a disorderly property if there are five incidences that require the police to respond within 180, 80-day period. In Wyndham, it's only two in 180 days. And what it does is it kind of holds the landlord's feet to the fire to make sure that they are renting to people who will not upset the neighborhood, but more importantly, the excessive use of the services of the police department. And this is strictly how Rockland has structured it, is it's under the administration of the police department, the police chief. Also, Wyndham has, has done it, there's several others out there. But one of the things is, is it gives them a chance to address it, but it also assesses fines and enforcement. One of the places that John would like to see included in this disorderly property, and each town sort of defines it a little bit differently of how they, in Rockland, they deform, they define it as a property on which there is located a building that houses one or more dwelling units, and then it says bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, motel, lodging, rooming house, or other structure that provides residential accommodations. In Wyndham's ordinance, they go to explain lots, plots, parcels of land on which residential or a building, or buildings mixed occupancy is located, including one-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings, rooming houses, boarding houses, mobile home parks. And there's a whole process to it. It's not just for the protection of the neighborhood, as Karenian is seeing, is it's also a protection for the residents in those situations too, because you may have somebody living in close proximity to another, say you're living in a mobile home park, and that neighbor consistently has calls, and there's children, you know, it's, it's for the protection and the good harmony of others who live in that neighborhood. But it's also for the protection of those who live and who might be experiencing, even in the same household, is what I'm trying to get at. So you might have somebody living in a household and another individual, and that one individual is the cause of all those calls. It gives some teeth to something, to be able to help those who sometimes cannot help themselves. This would have to go on, and I, this is just the first start, but I just wanted to know if this is something you guys wanted to pursue? I can give you different samples, I didn't know if you wanted to send this to a committee for some recommendations, but I, I just, Karenian brought it forward, I've talked to other towns that have enforced this, it has made a difference. Brunswick has one too, that I looked at. And it's hard when we have, we have such a small-town feel, but similar to these other towns, we do have some of these same problems. Some of these bigger towns, we do have some of these similar problems.
And John Lash has seen?
Yes, he's, he's taking a look at it. Stan took a look at it today. Karen, like I said, and it was a recommendation, just because I know what Karenian's been dealing with. So Karenian is a wonderful resource for a lot of the tenants we have in town, trying to get them landlords to address potential issues even within their units or their mobile home park, for the betterment of everybody who lives there.
Yep, yep, for the neighborhood. They do have some homes that have a lot of 10-minute visitors per night, you know what I mean?
Well, it's very hard to, when you have somebody calling you for help, and they're trying to get better, and next door is...
Yep.
Is a, is a place that...
Party house.
Is essentially a party house. And unfortunately, the police are limited to what they can do, you know, everybody thinks, oh, I call the police, that's what's going on there, I know what's going on there, they're supposed to arrest you. There's rules down, and, and that arrest is not always apparent. You, you can't, just because you, you think something's going on, you need somebody to confirm something's going on, and that's not always easy to do. But again, if we keep having these disturbances, there is something that, that can be done. And a lot of times, that falls on the landlord too, you know? People don't realize that if you are renting just to rent, and all you see is the dollar sign, and you're not seeing what's going along with that, everybody has a right to feel safe where they live. And some of, some of what Karenian's encountering is, is, could be, some of the people who are not feeling safe where they live, this could help.
I think the only thing I have an issue with this is, what if that... It's gonna be some sort of provision if they're trying to get that renter out, the landlord, and that person refuses to leave. Because I got that issue right now. I've given two individuals a month to get out, one's going on two months now and still hasn't left.
So if you're taking, if you're taking legal action?
Right, correct, there should be something in there. If you're taking legal action to get somebody out, and they're still refusing to leave, then the town should be coming after the landlord. You know, if they are in the process of legal action.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
But like...
If the landlord's not doing anything about it, then I can see that they're going after it. But if the landlord is going through legal action, and the person still refuses to leave, then I think the landlord should have some leniency on that. That's the only thing I can see that I would be a little concerned about. That's the only thing I can see that I would be a little concerned about.
It does give the police chief discretion.
Yep, no, I don't have an issue with that, it's just, I think, you know, Julie brought up, you know, a landlord's responsibility, well, if he is taking responsibility, then there shouldn't be any action taken against him if he is-
And let me say, a majority of our landlords are absolutely wonderful.
Yep. Some people have it easy getting people out, some people don't. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, would you wanna table this until a later date?
What did you want from us to go on this?
I just wanna know, do you want us to pursue this? Is this something that perhaps we should have John come in, Karen Anne, at a meeting, maybe in December meeting, have a conversation about it? Perhaps go to the planning board, or one of the other boards, economic development for review, you know, just, because, I mean, it wouldn't go on till the June, the June town meeting. But I don't want, I didn't want it to-
Are we gonna try to narrow this, or are we going to?
There's, I can, I mean, I can put out several variations of what we researched, and we can make it, we can merge it into one if you'd like. I mean, there's parts that I like of Wyndham, there was parts I liked of Brunswick. Rockland was what, you know, was put forward, but we can make it, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Nope, that's the last one.
I can circulate samples and-
I think we should-
Bob?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that John and Karen Anne get together and, really, and come up with a pro forma ordinance that we can then sit down and go over with planning board input.
So what I'd like to actually suggest is not John, Karen, because Karen's not, Karen's not an ordinance person?
Well, neither of them is strictly speaking, but they have, they have a lot of firsthand knowledge that, hey, it must be-
How about I give them the ordinances, they can highlight what they want, and then-
That's fine.
We can come up with it.
Yep.
No, I just, I just wanna say, I support the idea, I think it's a really good idea, long overdue in the town, and this gives us teeth where we didn't have it. And I think Abden's point is well taken. We shouldn't be going after landlords who are already trying to take care of problems.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, I guess you have a-
I have my marching work. Yep, great. I have lots of projects.
You do? All right, old business.
Old business, you missed a few things while you were away.
I heard, that was very well filled in.
After the last meeting, I was tasked, Max and I, and he left.
He has another meeting in his office, he said he need him for me to go get.
So Max and I put our heads together, and we came up with the RFPs that were circulated earlier, well, last week and earlier this week, for both AD Gray and the Friendship Street School. So AD Gray was, that was relatively easier to do a little bit. I didn't know whether to give preference to, so some of the things, just to highlight, we're really casting a wide net with that RFP of saying, hey, bring your ideas forth. Obviously, housing was an issue, which was a big part of, I think, why people voted the way they did. Do you wanna give preference, I mean, I included preference to housing projects in that RFP. There was also a portion of it where I included preference might be given to people for keeping the building intact. I don't know how any of you feel about that, you know, so I included those two things, and wanted your opinion, I would think, think those would be the two most-
More on AD Gray.
More on AD Gray, strictly for AD Gray. Is, do you wanna wait? Did you wanna remove the preference for keeping the building and just see what people come up with? How do you feel about keeping the preference for obviously some type of housing? I mean, it was, it could have been affordable, I did put the minimum AMI at 60%, which is what VOA had been proposing, which is still something that can get funded. But any developer that might do affordable housing could do that. I did specify that they be single bedroom units. I mean, you saw that, I just didn't know if there was anything you'd like me to change or address better in the RFP for AD Gray. And do we wanna give preference to projects that keep the building? That, because I know that was a big part of what the voters wanted to see, or we should just take preferences out at all?
How can we make it safe? What can be done up there where the building is safe?
Well, from what my understanding was, it wasn't that they couldn't figure out how to make the veneer safe, it was cost prohibitive and had other issues that went with it that made it even more cost prohibitive. So I don't, I didn't know if we wanted to, somebody could magically appear, I don't know, that's why I didn't-
Okay, so then in that case, they would have to tie the veneer-
They would have to tie the veneer to the building-
To make it safe, okay.
To make it safe, and figure out how to insulate it without causing a vapor barrier issue. But I didn't wanna presume people would do that, I didn't wanna presume that it would be demolished.
Okay. I just didn't want anyone to think they could just build something and not think about that.
Right, and I made, part of the appendices where all the, was the engineering, everything, we threw into the appendices that they could look at it.
And did VOA, did they have single bedroom units in all of them?
They were single bedroom units, yes. I believe they were, yes.
Was VOA gonna potentially do another proposal for this, or?
They had said that they would always keep an open mind, and they were committed, they really were very much, I got the impression they were very much committed. I did not have a direct conversation, since we're in the RFP process, that would not be appropriate for me to say, hey, what do you, you know, we have to-
Would we expect them to fill out the whole unapplication again, or go through all of that?
I would say everybody's on the same playing field, so yes. It probably would be easier for them, since they've already been through this once.
I think that's kinda where I was going with that, is they've already applied, so they need to reapply.
What's everybody's pleasure?
I read through the RFP, it looked great.
Thank you.
It really did, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm not a construction engineer, but it looked good, and covered all the things that I think ought to be covered. So.
Well, you're all set?
Yep.
Bob?
I'm good.
Okay.
Just getting that was a lot.
Now we can move along.
No, I think it strikes a good balance between preferences and looking kindly on, and preferring, and giving them options, there's a lot of options in that RFP for people to come up with projects, and one of them is the project we have.
Right.
I think we're covering all the bases there, I would say it's a, it's a good RFP, Julie.
So Friendship Street School, I basically took the AD Gray, I had to have a lot of people check to make sure, and even though you think you get every reference to the one before, so we, I tweaked it, we tweaked it a little bit. That one, we wanna maintain the building. One of the things that Bob brought up to me, and I'm sure he'll take his moment to bring up, but I know in discussions we've had in the past about Friendship Street School, you know, it does have the river, it goes all the way down, just so everybody's clear, it goes all the way down to the river. It actually is a beautiful piece of property. We've had several developers, I would say in the last year and a half to two years, express interest when it ever goes out to RFP, so it would be going out to RFP. We did not offer, nor was it my or Max's recommendation, that we provide for that building to be taken down. Again, no structural, to my knowledge, aside from, I'm gonna be careful with this, I have not found in my travels, nor has Max, or in the research, any structural engineering report on that building, other than the fire escape and the boiler. That's all I know of. It was operational up until, you know, October, beginning, mid-October of this year. But I do know, we do have interest in that. Did anybody see anything glaring there?
Well, should we have some engineers look at the building to see if there's anything that's going on with it that we can't see?
Or do we let the other people who want it do it?
That's what I, Julie was telling me a little bit of the story about it when I came in this afternoon. I got back very late Monday morning, early Monday morning, I should say, 2 o'clock. So it wasn't quite functioning yesterday, so I went in today. Are we selling this property, are we giving it away, I'm just-
I'm selling.
If we're selling it, then why are we requiring people to do an RFP? Why aren't we putting it out on the market to sell? Maybe with the caveat that the building remains there? But, because if somebody else turns around and buys it and owns it, why are we telling them what they can and can't do, when it's already in a land use ordinance as the village district? So it's already got specifications of what can go there.
Good point.
And in this waterfront.
It's, yeah, I used to hang out down there.
So I mean, if somebody's really interested in waterfrontage, you know, they'll do something with the building, that's maybe one of the caveats to it, but they also have waterfrontage and the building stays. We don't really care if they build, you know, as long as they build it through the ordinance, for what's they, it's already got requirements.
Are we looking for a business?
Maybe Abden would buy it.
No, I don't want it.
He's right on the river then.
I'm trying to sell, I'm trying to sell.
He's going the other way.
Go ahead, Bob.
I think an RFP is, at this point in the game, is a good way of testing the waters. It gives us control over what does go in there, it gives us the position as what is compatible or isn't compatible.
But we already have it, because it's in the village district, we have an ordinance.
If a guy wants to put an operation in there that isn't compatible with neighborhood uses, then, and we always have the option, Abden, if we don't get RFPs that we like, we always have the option at that point of putting it out, as you're suggesting, but at least we'll have an idea of what it's worth. You know, we have no idea what the market on this building is at this point. And RFP is a good way of getting an indication of that. And then I'll go to the point that Julie raised earlier. One of the things I'd like to have included in the RFP is not a requirement, but a suggestion, that we would more, not necessarily more favorably consider, but that we'd like to see a provision in a proposal that allows a walkway to go across the property where the water is. Some kind of walkway, I would think it would be on land, some people might think it could be built and made of wood, that would connect, interconnect that property with what would eventually go down to the Sylvania property, and go upriver to the park that we have behind the hardware store. So you've got a walk, a river walk there, that isn't obstructed because someone owns property and doesn't wanna let the town use it. Granted, we have other properties we have to bring on board to this idea, but this would serve as sort of a kernel of the idea, and it wouldn't be a requirement of the request for proposal, but it would perhaps make some proposals more attractive than others, if they allow that to be in there, that's all.
Yep, and that's one of the things Julie said, and I, I wouldn't, I'm not against that, I'm just saying, you got probably 15 or 20 landowners between there and Sylvania.
You do, I agree.
And may never get that walkway, so.
No, a good idea is catch hold, and maybe it's a good idea, maybe it's a terrible idea.
Yep, yeah, because not many houses are down close to the river from Sylvania to there, so they may allow it, but some people get paranoid about being sued, and people crossing their property.
Yep.
So, you know, it's like a snowmobile trail when the town, you know, the town club builds it, and next thing you know, somebody else comes in that buys the property and then won't allow it, allow the snowmobile trail to go across their property, so then you've got a broken trail.
More sure to do it as an easement, and get other properties to come in with easements, so that that wouldn't disappear, but maybe that's pie in the sky that I'm thinking here, I just-
The trains behind there are very steep, as I recall, in a lot of years, but they're very steep beyond the little playground directly behind us.
There's a brook up in there, just, there's a brook up in there, a big brook in there, actually.
And it's pretty, it's really pretty.
Oh, yeah.
We used to walk down.
Really nice down through there.
It was steep.
I think that the, and I was trying to figure this out today, and I asked a lot of people. When I first got here, there was, we were gonna buy the property next to Pine Street Landing, and I remember there was going to be like a river walk. I seem to recall the river walk being not on land, but on a boardwalk around. The goal was to the Cabot property, across the bridge, maybe over behind the parking lot. That was what I was under the impression the river walk was. It wasn't on land necessarily, it was more like a boardwalk.
I don't recall a boardwalk, but I do-
I remember on the Cabot side, from the landing up to the bridge, we had talked about building, putting islands in there and building a walk across there. Because that was an issue with the elver fishing and stuff like that, how that would affect if we'd still be allowed to fish down there as well. I do remember that.
The other side, when they were talking about a river walk, it was getting permission from just the landowners to walk. I know in my neighborhood, there was one family that said-
But I think on the landing side, I think it was like a boardwalk, like they did in Gardner, at the Gardner Town Landing.
Nothing was ever set in stone, I mean, that was at the, a couple of the big meetings we had at AD Gray, not AD Gray, Middle School, yeah.
I just didn't remember, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it was, it never moved really beyond the talk.
I was never sure where that landed, because afterward we-
Yep. Nice talk.
So, I just need to know if you would like me to let those RFPs out? You need to make a motion for me to let them out, and we can get them out in circulation, or if you think they need more work, or if you wanna change something?
I'd like to do a good job.
I would move to put those out for consideration, and to see what we get. And if we don't get anything, then I guess it's the next step, whatever that is. But we're not gonna know what the market is until we ask people to come in and make us offers.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Jan, you were saying something?
I can't remember.
Yeah, is there any more discussion?
No, no, I don't think, I just thought, I thought they were well written. I was wondering, I don't know that there's a big difference between the two properties, because they're both in town, and we own both of them.
The same concerns you would have on School Street, I think, exist on Friendship Street. You know, that was why the whole of the off-street parking. Friendship Street though, you know, from what, Friendship Street actually having the potential of a river view and things like that, that's, you know, it's, from what I've, from what, and I have to trust what the people who have worked here for many, many years have said, is Friendship Street schools in better shape than AD Gray. You know, it just-
Yeah, it would be interest, I find it, I think it'd be really interesting to see what comes up, to see what people could bring to all the borough and to have, and have that building be used for something.
Is there a timeline for, on the RFP?
Yes.
If there is, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna put them out, and we have meetings, and it was, it was a pretty quick timeline, but I think if you're, if you're serious, you make it happen. I talked to a couple of people about that, and, you know, do we give them more time? And they're like, no, because once you have more time, it's, oh, we'll get to that, we'll get to that, we'll get to that.
How many acres was that? Do you remember?
It's in the RFP. 1.87.
1.82 acres.
Oh, I was close, I was 1.82 acres. Oh, I was close, I was, one point eight two acres. But it does go all the way to the water.
Any more discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Special meeting, special town meeting.
Warrant. We did a lot of stuff when you weren't here, that, we, we really.
So you didn't need me.
That's untrue.
Don't try to say?
No, I'm not saying that. There you go, you can take one, pass one down. They always asked about a hearing report, I didn't always have one, of report. So, uh, this is what we discussed at our last meeting. This would be the language. One thing that came up, and just, you would vote tonight to set this as the language, and we would set our hearing date on this for our next, for our next meeting in November, to have this special hearing, well, the hearing for the warrant. But one of the things that we did not talk about, and I thought about later, and I did send in my town manager's report, shall the town approve to change its main public employees retirement plan to allow eligible emergency medical service employees and firefighters to participate in main public employees retirement special plan three C, effective January first, 2022, for future service only. This change will provide emergency medical service employees and firefighters retirement after twenty-five years of service at two-thirds of their average final compensation, and that is the average of the three highest years of earnings. So the change I made was to include firefighters. Now, currently, we do not have any firefighters that would, under the rules of main pers, would qualify to participate. But if we're going to do a study that contemplates the potential of maybe having paid fire EMS, whatever that would look like, this would allow for it, so again, it doesn't have to go back out again as a special. We can, we can keep it in, we can take it out. Again, no, none of our current firefighters qualify for this.
But in the future.
But in the future, they may.
We have something in place.
We would have something in place. So that's, that's something to consider. And again, the reason that we are changing the pension from the AC plan, which is what regular municipal employees in Waldaburrow are in, to the special plan, the three C, is that it's twenty-five years of service at any age, and it's two-thirds of the salary. With the AC plan, it's your normal retirement age, which ranges anywhere now from sixty-two up to sixty-seven. And, um, so you need, you have the age requirement, and it's fifty percent of your earnings, the top three years.
Mine was fifty percent, if you, at twenty-five years. I think that's a good deal, and I think it's.
And I think, and the purpose behind this, so everybody's clear, and we'll get much more into it at the public hearing, is this is a recruitment and retention tool.
Yep.
How are we sitting? We passed the deadline, so where are we with people?
We lost two people. Two out of the four. Well, technically, three out of the four. One had already left. So one made the decision to get vaccinated. The increases we made at the last meeting, there are faces we haven't seen in a while, and there are new faces. We just went through our first kind of payroll cycle. Not everybody was aware, so, you know, it's only been two weeks since our last meeting. But when I reviewed payroll, it was a nice surprise. And we're hoping that as this gets down the road. We're getting cold calls from all over. Richard's actually interviewed a couple people from, that are not in Leaning County. So that, that speaks volumes.
That's good, that's good.
I don't want to jinx myself, but knock wood, we're on the path, but I think that's what it took. I think this will add, you know, and it, it's, it's, it's hard. Um, I will let you know that my next meeting at five o'clock, I have a meeting in Friendship at our next meeting, so I might just be a little bit past six to talk about the rate increase for them. I have not heard again from Jefferson, so I do not know what they're thinking. I will be sending out another email to them, just reminding them, we need to know, you know, what their, what their decision is, or whether we'll be covering them after January, uh, January first. But Friendship, we're going to go down and have a, a meeting with their select board. So Richard and I, as chair, I invited Abden down to, to come with us, if he would like, and should be, you know, Friendship has been a wonderful partner over many years.
All right, so would somebody like to make a motion to, to have the public hearing on December?
No, no, the special town meeting will be on December fourteenth.
December fourteenth.
And the special town, the special, the, the hearing for this warrant will be on November twenty-third.
Okay, would somebody like to make that motion? To have the public hearing on November twenty-third and the special election on Tuesday, December fourteenth?
We didn't do that before? We, we didn't do that?
We did, but we have to sign it tonight, since, since there was a change in the wording we added to firefighters.
So we'll have to make a new motion.
Yep, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You all set, Bob?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, you're all set there? Agenda items for the next meeting?
We'll have the public hearing.
Yeah.
What was the one you said?
What's that, Jan?
And Stan was going to come back for more dangerous buildings or enforcement issues?
Next time, let's write it down.
Okay.
All right, before we adjourn, do we want to go back to number six in our executive session before we?
Up to you guys. Do you want to continue that discussion with Max, or?
Don't we have to do our Philbrook?
Oh, yes.
We've got to do those.
Yes.
Should I let Max know he has to come back in, or do we want to just pick that up at the next meeting?
Do you want to continue that discussion for the next meeting? For an executive?
Which discussion?
The number six.
Oh, um, we had to cut it short because we were at six o'clock.
The acquisition of property.
Oh, doesn't make a big difference to me.
Just, just to note that number six is time-sensitive. There's a deadline associated with, with what Max has in mind, and I.
Oh, if they, well, if that's the case, then maybe we can take a little time to do it.
Up here, Max, right now.
He's watching, I know he's watching. No, I guess.
We are not in executive, but do you need us to take action on what we discussed in executive tonight, or?
On number six? Number six, go ahead.
What, was it executive?
Yeah, um.
Or do you want them to think about it and we'll take action at the next meeting?
They can think about it, but I would need to have like signed contracts and everything done by next meeting. But I'm fine doing that.
So give everybody time to think about this?
I'm going to go away.
Somebody, somebody up here? I don't want to be on, make a decision.
Either, either option is fine.
Get it over with.
Yep, I'm fine either option.
Do you mind? Jan wants, Jan, uh, the Colonel said, let's just go into executive, finish up the discussion and get it over with.
Because I would think about it.
I would agree with that, if everybody else is minimal, I don't want to.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Say that.
So why don't we take action on Philbrook, and then we'll go into executive session?
That's what I, that's what I was going to.
Okay.
Is, uh, all right, back to Philbrook, the Philbrook trustees discussion. Five one, which is FY twenty twenty-two dash three. Somebody like to make a recommendation?
I would move payment of the request subject to consultations with our community navigator.
And the price tag on that was three thirty-five, Bob?
Three, three forty-five, I think.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Now, five two is twenty twenty-two dash four. Would somebody like to make a motion on that?
I, I would move that we refer that back to our community navigator for better determination of the facts and possible alternatives.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, oh, no, Max needs to come back. So we need to go into executive session to finish up.
Come back. I will try to be Max, like. I don't know, the Colonel got meetings over much, or quicker.
He could have one though. No, thanks. Yeah, we just put it all on next month. I guess all we need to do is make a motion to go into executive session to continue discussing acquisition of real estate property for, or of economic development. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I move we go into executive session for what you said.
Pursuant? Do I have to redone?
Oh, okay, pursuant to one MRSA, four oh five, to discuss acquisition of real property and economic development.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Hold on, I, I, we're not out yet.
No, that's fine.
I, I just don't know what I'm doing. Hold on.
Session.
I move, I move. We come out of executive session.
Is there a second? Nobody wants to go home? They're trying to kill my time, ain't they? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I'll come down to the office tomorrow morning and sign the documents, if that's okay.
Yep.
Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Bob? Okay.
Yes.